Good afternoon, everyone. And I would like to call to order the special meeting of the Maricopa County Community College District to review, discuss, and consider the approval of the proposed budgets for Gateway Early College High School fiscal year 2122 and Phoenix College Prep Academy fiscal year 2122. As a note, we are live captioning our meetings, and there is a link posted in the chat window that you may click on to open a webpage with the live captioning. As we move forward, I'd like to call roll for board member attendance, and I will note that Ms. Munoz is present. And with that, Ms. Bittersmith?
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath?
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norene?
I'm here.
Great. Ms. Smith? Ms. Smith, are you present? Dr. Thor? I'll come back to Ms. Smith.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Nguyen, are you on?
I am, present.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, I note as having logged in but not noted as present yet, I'm present. So I'm going to call board members as six present, one absent, and when Ms. Smith connects in, we'll note that she is with us. With that, Dr. Gonzalez, would you please introduce our presenters tonight as we move forward? Thank you.
Good afternoon.
I am so sorry, Dr. Gonzalez.
No problem.
I just received a text from Ms. Smith. She is in the meeting now.
Okay. Are we good to go? Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes, sir. My apologies.
No problem. All righty. Well, thank you again, President Sullivan, members of the board, CEC, and guests. So to this late this afternoon, we have our principals for our early college high schools on campus to present their budgets for the upcoming year. We have Principal Keith Brown and Principal Stacy Boyd, and I believe Principal Bo will be the first presenter this afternoon. Thank you.
May I go ahead and start?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Will there be a presentation up?
There should be. Those are the presentation up?
Perfect. Perfect. President Sullivan, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC, and guests, my name is Stacy Boyd, and I'm the proud principal of Gateway Early College High School, home of the Gecko's. And thank you for the opportunity to present here tonight, as this is my first go-round. So I'm pretty excited about it, and unfortunately, I haven't had an opportunity to meet all the board members, but I'm looking forward to that. Next slide, please. So this is a comparison of FY 2021 and 2022 budgets. I'm going to try to do my best to make a boring presentation fairly enthusiastic, so I'll do my best to do so. The budget is based on assuming the same elements, the same enrollment, an ADM of 276 students, as noted at the top. Small school cuts, it shows that small school cut fundings has increased by approximately $15,000 and is assumed to be phased out by 2022 as enrollment continues to increase for both PCPA and Gateway Early College High School. You can also see the small school cuts last year in 2021 was cut by $5,000, a little over 5,000. This year, it was decreased to zero. Proposition 301 per student, the proposition 301 funding has almost doubled, which is pretty awesome, which is a great improvement from the past years. It's also an incentive for performance, for teacher performance, as it pertains to the dynamics of student achievement. So we're looking forward to creating a document that will allow teachers to create a performance pay piece to that. Next slide, please. The impact that it has, that the budget had on Gateway, as far as state funding goes, it has not changed much due to the ADM. We did not change that, which I'll speak in regards to on the next slides. Also, proposition 123 has increased by $7,500 in 2022, which is a push from government, Governor Ducey. He's actually trying to implement or has implemented a $3.5 billion resource fund for K-12 institutions over the next 10 years. So I'm looking for at least another eight years of funding from that as well. Again, speaking on proposition 301, as it pertains to state funding, it's doubled. So now we're looking at about 300,000. One of the largest increases was the ESAR fund, which was about $400,000, which we'll be using for school improvement as far as increasing the class sizes of the classes in addition to the ventilation system in which we're attempting to replace. And as you can see, that Gateway is in good financial standings. Next slide, please. Thank you. So a few elements that I like to highlight, which I'm also going to discuss fairly quickly, and that is, it shows that ADM is 276 students due to the fact that we're in a weird year just due to the pandemic. I wanted to be very conservative in regard to the ADM. However, I also have to say that my awesome staff has put together a recruiting campaign, and instead of holding off at 75 students, we're currently have 93 students enrolled. So with that, one of the concerns was trying to reach 100 students, which Dr. Gonzalez has nicely asked that we help to increase the enrollment at Gateway prior to his departure. So we're definitely going to participate in that. So with that being said, we're going to, our goal is 100 students for this year, and we will hire additional teachers to support that as well this summer. There's a, there would be approximately 27 special education students on campus with an additional 22 ELL students. Another highlight was that the board approved a 4% cost of living adjustment this past, for this past year. We were a little concerned about that since our budget was already created for last year and adopted, but it appears that we're able to move forward with that and look forward to that in the next couple of years. And the last part is that we're truly embedded in the college, and you can see that by our budget includes $150, $150,000 in college tuition along with $45,000 in college books. That pretty much concludes, I hope I had somewhat of enthusiastic voice, but that pretty much concludes the budget, the proposed budget for Gateway Early College High School, and thank you.
I heard enthusiasm, so good job.
Thank you. I truly appreciate that.
You're welcome, Principal Boyd. Back to you, Dr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Principal Boyd, and good work there, and congratulations to the graduating class this year. From what I understand, you all have increased the number of students who graduated from Gateway two weeks prior to their graduation from their high school. And what was that number, Principal Boyd?
So President Sullivan and Dr. Gonzalez, that number was 2023 students.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
Good work over there. Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Principal Brown, you've got to live up to the enthusiasm here, so you're.
Marie, Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Are we going to have an opportunity to ask questions? Are we going to have both presentations and then questions, or do we have questions at the end of each school?
I'm just going to have us have the presentations, and then as we look at motions, we can ask for discussion with questions. Does that work for you, Mrs. McGrath?
Very well, thank you.
Please proceed. Go ahead.
I guess that means I'm up, and I'm going to come in. I guess I have to live up to Principal Boyd there. My name is Keith Brown. And Chancellor Gonzalez, thank you for having us. President Sullivan, board members, and members of the CEC. I'm very excited to present our budget for Phoenix College Preparatory Academy for FY 22. We're excited. I'll give you just a couple of quick things. We did have 48% of our graduating seniors this year that earned their AA degree. That was 26 of 53, and $3.5 million in Scott grants and scholarships that those graduates earned, and over 2,500 college credits for that group as well. So that was our largest graduating class that we've ever had. In terms of our comparison from FY 21 and FY 22, we are increasing enrollment by 10. We actually have turned away close to 100 students because we need additional classrooms and additional facilities. Our office, we're packed out. We have too many people, really. It's hard to, but anyway, we need more classrooms and more office space because we keep turning students away. We also have a waiting list of about 20 students besides the ones we've turned away, but we're at 240. And Stacy's already gone over much of this, and so the state-based funding per student is similar or the same. State-based funding for us, we had a little bit more in a small school cut. The additional assistance per student stayed the same. A small schools cut has gone down to zero, and our Prop 301 has also almost doubled. Next slide, please. Our state-based funding this year has gone up about 70, 75,000 because of the 10 students' enrollment at 240 instead of 230. Additional assistance went up a little bit. Prop 123 went up $5,000. So our total equalization is up slightly, about $80,000. Our Prop 301 is up significantly, probably 100, what is that, 120, a little more than 120. And structural improvement has stayed the same. Results-based funding, we've received results-based funding three years in a row for our test scores, and so we've, that's 85,000, almost $86,000. Total state funding is up a couple hundred thousand dollars, and then our federal is up 200, you know, because of the ESAR funds, ESAR I, ESAR II, we're up like $270,000. We've used much of that, those funds for school improvements of, we've added additional people because of COVID, a nurse or air purifiers, safety guards, as we brought students back during the fourth quarter. We wanted to make sure we were implementing the COVID policies. We have additional aids while working online and things like that. So we've used those funds in that regard. Next slide, please. The elements of our budget of 2021 is we've gone to 240 instead of 230. We've added math instructors and will use the, continue with that math instructor and use those ESAR funds that we're allowed to use for additional years. We did get approved a couple of years ago for enrollment up to 300. We'll probably even go back for more if we can get more space. We have 22 special education students and 22 ELL students. All of our staff also received the 4% COLA, cost of living increase, and our budget is including 190,000 for college books and 74, or excuse me, for tuition and 74,000 for college books. But we're a little more than Gateway because at one point, we weren't being able to get our students in the ACE program at Phoenix College. So we were having to do some additional. Now we've worked it out, where we're back having some of our students in the ACE program again, so we might not use as many of those funds because of them being in the ACE program. Next slide? If there is one, I can't remember if we had any more or not.
Nope, that was it.
That was it. Okay. All right.
Thank you, Principals Brown and Boyd. I think that concludes the presentation, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez, and thank you, Principal Boyd, and thank you, both of you, Principal Brown. So with that, I know there are questions that will possibly surround both budgets, so I'm going to take us back to the Gateway budget. And having heard this information, I would like us to consider approval of the proposed budget. So for purpose, before we move to discussion, do I have a motion to approve the proposed budget for Gateway Early College High School fiscal year 2122?
Still moved. This is Mrs. Nguyen.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Bittersmith. There's been a motion to approve, moved in second to approve the proposed budget as presented. Is there any discussion? And I'll start with you, Mrs. McGrath.
Am I unmuted?
Yes.
You are unmuted.
Thank you. I didn't see anything in this budget, and perhaps it's here, and I don't know how to read it, of what the district is providing in the way of funding. I know that we provide rent and utilities and such, and I would like to see that in the report when we have our formal meeting in a couple of weeks. And I have a question. What in the world is ESAR funding?
President Sullivan and Board Member McGrath, the ESAR funding is the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund that came from the CARES Act, which is an equalization stability funding to help support through COVID. Did that help?
So this is a one-time funding?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And could you give me a ballpark or figure of what the district provides you in the way of funding?
So President Sullivan, Board Member McGrath, in regards to the school's funding, there is no direct cost in regards to what the college provides, except for the cost of the building facilities in addition to the lighting, as we are part of the community college. Traditionally, in a charter school system, anywhere from 200 to $250,000 is used towards building and funding, building funding. However, there's traditionally not a funding source that would allow for the cost of books and/or the cost of a, what do I say, budget in regards to college tuition. We're early college high schools, so we actually accrue that cost, and we pay the college for that.
When you do the formal presentation in a couple of weeks, would you please include that somewhere in the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
And what we, what you pay for rent and utilities, I'd appreciate knowing what the full cost of the school is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Gonzalez, would those be considered in-kind expenses or? Thank you.
Yes, President Sullivan, and we can include that as an indirect, or excuse me, an in-kind support to the charter schools.
And that would satisfy, I believe, then Mrs. McGrath's interest.
Thank you.
Sure. Board members, we have a motion. I'm going to continue. Is there any other discussion on the motion regarding Gateway's early college high school budget?
I just have a clarification question, if I may, Mrs. Sullivan.
Yes, Mrs. Nguyen.
Under the proposition 301 per student cost, it increased significantly, almost doubled. And so, number one, what are those funds used for? And what caused it to go up so significantly? And what is the impact that has on our students?
President Sullivan, Board Member Nguyen, Ms. Nguyen. So traditionally, it was a 40, 40, 20, which the first part would be as a base salary to help increase teacher salary. The second part would be a performance base pay, which is traditionally test scores, state state testing, benchmark scoring, and so forth. And then the 20% could be used in the classroom as classroom support, instructional support. So when, in regards to how we spend it, money has been traditionally been spent based off of that. So a certain percentage would go towards the base funding. Another percent would go towards the performance of how teachers perform in the classroom based off of student achievement. And then that third part would be the instructional piece and how we utilize that with purchasing of books or instructional material.
Oh. Okay. I guess maybe I should ask it a different. It looks like, so if we take $425 per student times 276 students, that's a dollar value of 117,300. And is that what you're telling me, was that what you just explained?
So what I explained was, and I'm sorry, President Sullivan, Board Member Nguyen, I explained how, or at least attempted to explain how the money was given and spent in the past year. The increase is an algorithm. It's a formula that is presented by Department of Education. So we never know until the year of what that money is going to be, but it's based off of tax revenue. So the increase has, but it's a tremendous increase, which is great. In addition to it, if I'm not mistaken, and I'll bring forth the information, this next year, it's no longer broken into three parts. It appears to be monies that will be used within the school, and the school has to develop a program or a document that allows the spending and how the spending is going to be. And right now, we actually have a committee that is putting together what that document would look like.
Okay. And one last thing, and I promise I'm done. So you said that enrollment was going up, and it looks like it's the same, 276 to 276. Are you looking at the next class that you anticipate that you'll go above 276 as we go into 2023 budget?
President Sullivan, Board Member Nguyen, so the idea when we created this budget was that we were not going to increase our enrollment just due to the fact of the pandemic, and that's not being able to go into other schools and do the traditional recruitment. However, with that being said, the idea is we want it to increase. We wanted to build a new culture on campus in addition to help pay for the new construction that's going on on campus. So we sat down and put together a comprehensive plan for recruitment, and it turned into like a virtual recruitment. We just didn't know how it was going to actually affect the community. And with that being said, we were able to go past the 75, and as I mentioned, we're at 93, which will increase our enrollment to 294 students currently. We're hoping to move that 93 to 100.
Great.
Which is the.
And then with, and the proposition 301 per student should stay at least at the 733 or possibly increased due to the tax revenues. Is that?
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay. I just wanted to understand the numbers I was looking at.
I appreciate that, and thank you for the question.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan.
Sure. Thank you. Board members, are there any other questions rather than having me go down the list, just speak up? Okay. It doesn't appear there are any more questions for discussion. Yes, go ahead.
I'd like to ask another question or two.
You may.
I'd like to have, when we have our formal presentation in a couple of weeks, I would like to know what the cost per student is. I don't see that anywhere here. I see what we're allocating in these various areas. And also, I just heard new construction. I'd like to know what construction is going on.
President Sullivan, Board Member McGrath, in regards to per pupil, we're looking at approximately $7,000 per pupil. It's on slide number two, which is the state-based funding per student in addition to the additional assistance per student, which is approximately a little less than $7,000. In addition to the construction, the construction, we're utilizing the ESAR funds. The classrooms were awkwardly shaped where we were unable to acquire or have 25 students in the classroom. Some of the classrooms could fit 25 to 30, other can only fit about 10 to 15. So we utilized the fund, or we're utilizing the funding to ensure that all classrooms can hold 25 students, which is what our charter is based on. In addition to, and change out the ventilation system, which has been here for approximately 17 years, which we could not control per classroom, nor could we control the airflow in the classroom. So with the expansion of the classroom, it was important to also include the expansion of the ventilation system as well, which all falls under the COVID relief fund.
And is, does that show up in the information that we've been given?
No, ma'am. That's part of the ESAR fund, which is under that $400,000.
And you quoted an amount per student. Does that include what the district puts in? It seems to me that that's very low per student. I thought that the state generally did 10,500 or more per student. I know it's less for charter schools, but I didn't know it would be that much less. And I kind of wondered, do we have everything in there?
President Sullivan, Board Member McGrath, I will confirm that in the next board meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. McGrath, you said you had a couple of questions. Did both of them get answered for you?
Yes, if I come up with any, I will.
Well, I'm going to take.
Meeting.
Okay. Yeah. Send them in the email so that we can all receive the answer then. I'm going to call the question on the vote, on the motion. So with all of that, being no further discussion, all those in favor of passing or supporting this budget to move forward, please vote by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Or is there any board member opposed? And again, Ms. Munoz is unable, I don't think, to speak, though I'll ask her, Ms. Munoz, do you have a point of view on this? And the vote?
Sorry. I vote aye.
Thank you. So with that, by a vote of 7-0, with also our student trustee voting aye, the fiscal year 2122 proposed budget for Gateway Early College High School has been approved. We recognize there will be additional information provided at the meeting on the 22nd on this topic. So moving then on to the Phoenix College budget, and having heard information pertaining to that, the Phoenix College Prep Academy budget, I would like to entertain a motion to approve the proposed budget for fiscal year 2122. Do I have a motion?
Still moved, Mrs. Nguyen.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Dr. Norene. With that, is there any discussion by board members on this motion?
Yes, I'd like to know what we're paying for each student here also.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. McGrath. Principal Brown?
Yes, President Sullivan and Board Member McGrath, we are exactly the same as Gateway when it comes to per student. It's right around $7,000 per student. So our numbers and what we get from the state is exactly the same per student.
So you have divided the number of students into the dollar amount that you have coming in, and you get that amount of money? Or does it come up to more than that with our contributions?
Well, with federal funding, it comes in higher. There's some things, especially this year with ESAR being one-time CARES Act relief. But so there is some more money this year, but it is that same formula each year, yes.
I'd like to see the exact amount that we have allocated per student, even if it's only for one year. I think it's important that we have an idea of what we're spending on these students.
Okay. We can provide that at the board meeting for sure. Thank you.
Perhaps we could have it before the meeting so we could study it. I'd appreciate that.
Yes, we can get that to you beforehand for sure.
Mrs. McGrath will have the agenda review next Tuesday, and if both principals can agree to that, perhaps we can have this information for the agenda review.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments on the Phoenix College? Go ahead.
I just, so two things. First of all, congratulations again on your senior class graduating from both college and high school. I, it's just, I'm always inspired by this charter school and the work that they do and the work you continue to do. So thank you. I heard you say that we're turning students away, which as, in a time when our enrollments are down, I like, my inside voice was screaming. So is there a way that we can support you and support your mission to create classrooms, do. do something so we don't have to turn students away? What you're doing there is so important, and I just, I want to support your efforts. So what can we do to support you?
Yes, President Sullivan and Board Member, when, I appreciate that. Thank you for what you had to say on that topic, because we're trying to investigate the same thing. And I know Dr. Nuomo is on here as well, and so I hope to work with him in the future to solve that issue. But certainly, we would appreciate any support from the board that we could get to brainstorm. I've thought about building a gym. Phoenix College actually owns the property across the street, the old nursing building, as well as the copy center across the street. So talked about building a gym with some classrooms right across the street that would create some more space for students. So that, I hope to bend the ear of our president and anyone else that will listen in the near future.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions pertaining to the Phoenix Prep Academy budget? And Dr. Numun, do you have any comment that you'd like to offer?
Thank you, President Sullivan. Really just kudos to Principal Brown and his team. You know, he did mention 26 of PCPA students graduated with either an AA or an AS. Actually, eight of them graduated with both an AA and an AS. And 85% of this year's graduating class earned over 30 credits from Phoenix College. So PCPA is certainly a strategic strength for us, and we're committed to exploring all options to give them the resources they need in terms of spaces to maximize the number of students we can serve.
Thank you for that. Again, board members, any other comments or questions?
Ms. Sullivan, I'm back.
Yes. Yes, okay.
Sorry, it's fine. When they mentioned across the street, are they referring to the main campus of Phoenix College?
I don't know.
Board Member McGrath, there, I actually, there is, the old nursing building is a home. It was a house right across the street. It's not actually on the main campus of Phoenix College, but Phoenix College, before they built the new nursing building over on Third Street, they had nursing in this house, and it's right across the street from the Phoenix College Preparatory Academy campus. And also, right two doors down is the copy center for Phoenix College. So I went out and measured it, and we could put a gym with some classrooms there. So it's not on the main campus, but it's right across the street from the Osborne campus where PCPA, you know, where we're located.
You keep saying street. Would you please identify the street? And also, you just said you want to convert these buildings to a gymnasium. Is that going to be a construction project? Or could you just take out the inside of the building? Explain a little bit about what you have in mind for reconstruction here.
Well, I did, it, again, it's just brainstorming to create more space for students, but I would be open to either, but I think whatever creates more space, which I think a gymnasium with some classroom would actually create even more spaces, and we could put the copy center in there as well. But to renovate the old nursing house, if that was an option, we would do that as well. But I think there would be more space created by actually bulldozing those buildings and creating a bigger building that, you know, could do more things.
I still didn't hear the name of the street.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That you plant, that you're talking about. Are you talking about going north?
It's, it's actually on 10th, it's actually on 10th Street, or excuse me, 10th Avenue. And, and so it would be Osborne and 10th Avenue is where the one building I'm referring to is.
So what corner are you on in relationship to 10th Avenue and Osborne?
We're on the other side of the street.
Which direction, please?
Okay, we're on the west side of the street, and the building that I'm talking about is on the east side of 10th Avenue.
Okay, could we have a map presented to us of what you're discussing? This is difficult to envision, and is there any way you could use the buildings? Because you didn't mention a gym in the original presentation. You just said you couldn't take more students because you didn't have enough classroom space. So could you include a proposal just to convert these buildings to classroom space? And why can't you use the gym over at Phoenix College?
Yes, ma'am, we can, we can definitely do that, and we do utilize the gym as well. And converting those buildings into classrooms is a real possibility as well. So I, I would like to get with President Nuomo and anybody else, Dean Nelson and Mr. DeRose, and just, and talk about five-year plan for PCPA. But that would be a part of the possibilities.
So you're saying you have the current use of the Phoenix College gym. Why are you talking about a new gymnasium?
Mrs. McGrath, I don't intend to be rude for either you or Principal Brown, but it seems that this is a conversation beyond today's budget discussion. So we're moving outside of the scope of our motion. With that, I think we can table that for another time and move forward on any other pertinent questions to the budget that's been presented today. And then we can move for, beyond that for another time. So with that, and thank you, thank you for that accommodation. Any question pertinent to today's budget presentation? Some board members particularly tied to the motion to approve the budget?
Call for the question.
Thank you. With that, all board members in favor of supporting the motion to approve the Academy proposed budget, please vote by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Ms. Munoz, can you offer your vote?
Aye.
Thank you. So with that, by a vote of seven zero from board members, the proposed budget has been approved, also with the support of the student trustee, Ms. Munoz. So with that, board members, I'm going to ask you another question, and that is, as board members, would you approve the use of your electronic signature on the approved fiscal year 2021 budgets for Gateway and for Phoenix College Prep Academy? I'm going to ask just for, there doesn't need to be a motion. I just need to know whether or not you support that. So if you are opposed, please say so now. So I will accept that all board members are willing to use their electronic signatures as we move forward on these budgets for the Gateway Early College High School and Phoenix College Prep Academy. And I would like to announce that adopt, more formal adoption of these budgets and the opportunity for public comment will take place at the June 22nd, 2021 regular meeting of the governing board, with notes that next Tuesday at Agenda Review, we will also have additional information presented based on the inquiries from today's discussions. Congratulations again to both of the charter schools for their successful years, and we look forward to continuing our relationship and moving forward, particularly as you are able to impact the lives of so many young people in our communities. So thank you, and with that, I'm going to end our special session. So with that, it's adjourned, and we're going to move on to our next component of tonight's meeting, and that is our work session, which I will call to order with all board members present. And with that, the topic is adapting to student needs post-pandemic fall 2021 and beyond. Dr. Gonzalez, would you start us off on that work session this afternoon? Thank you.
Yes, President Sullivan, members of the board, CEC, and guests with us that are here this afternoon. We are pleased to be here to discuss what the return to, well, we're going to sprinkle in some return to work, but mostly what the return means for our students beginning this fall and beyond. We'd like to begin to think about post-pandemic. We know that we are still in a worldwide pandemic, but things are certainly looking better today than they have this time last year and even just a few months ago. So we're really excited about that. As you know, there is a policy that is on the board's agenda for the end of this month that is to, it is to allow for remote and virtual work policy differences compared to what we've been able to do in the past. So that's not necessarily something that addresses the current pandemic, but it addresses what we, some of the lessons that we learned through the pandemic and being a better organization for all that we've learned. And so that policy is reflective of that. We think that it makes us an innovative organization. It'll make us a more attractive organization, and so we look forward to continued conversations, and hopefully with the approval of board, the implementation of that policy over the next several months. So I mentioned that because there is an interplay between how employees will come back to work in a more robust fashion than we are here today, and how we will see more and more students on our campuses here in the near future. As we approach the fall semester, we, we definitely have a fall semester schedule that has a greater number of courses that have a face-to-face element in them, whether they be entirely face-to-face or whether they have a face-to-face component as a part of the course. It would probably hover in the 30 to 50% range across our system. We're moving towards full functionality in the face-to-face environment for all of our students and all of our employees. As we approach the spring semester, you'll see an even greater number of face-to-face offerings for our students. But the important part of this is that we are back, and we will be back, and we will have full functionality in a face-to-face environment. So with that, I've got presenters to this afternoon are Dr. Eric Lashinsky, who serves as our interim provost, Dr. Paul Dale, who is the president of Paradise Valley Community College, and Dr. Sasha Radesic, who is the FEC president and also an economics professor. So with that, I will turn it over to the three that I just mentioned, and let's get into a conversation about what return in the fall, adapting to student needs post-pandemic fall 2021 and beyond looks like. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chancellor Gonzalez and President Sullivan, members of the board and fellow members of CEC. My name is Eric Lashinsky, and I'm honored to serve as the interim provost for the Maricopa Community Colleges. As Chancellor Gonzalez mentioned, Paul Dale, our Paradise Valley president, along with Sasha Radesic, our FEC president, will be also providing some information and some conversation for all of us today. In addition, I've also asked Matt Ashcraft, who is our Associate Vice Chancellor for Institutional Research, to be providing a little information towards the end as well regarding how we're continuing to survey and get access to our students and their needs. So Elsa, if you would, advance to the next slide. That'd be great. So today, I know our time is somewhat limited, but we're going to do our best to help paint for you a picture of our current state of enrollment. We're not going to spend too much time on that. We're definitely going to highlight for you what we've learned from our students and what their expectations are and their plans are for fall of '21. In addition, we're going to just share with you a little bit of information and data regarding our students' performance in the online environment. As you know, we transitioned to fully virtual last spring, and we were definitely in more of a mixed modality this fall and currently this spring. We're just going to share with you some of the student performance data that we've learned in the online environment. And then most importantly, we're going to share with you the exciting ways we're adapting to meet our students' needs for fall '21 and beyond. Elsa, thank you. So our current state of enrollment, and as you know, it's quite fluid. Right now, our head count, as you can see, we're slightly down from this time last year, fall '20. Similarly, with our footsie, we're slightly down as well. The good news, though, is we are optimistic that we are trending in the right direction of if not being even, if not, if not with greater student enrollment for fall of '21. The reason for that is we know that we have a schedule that will align and meet with our students' needs. In addition, we know that our colleges are coming back to support services both in person and also remotely. So consequently, although our enrollment right now is not the picture we want it to be, there are some factors that we'll share with you that influence that, but we know it's fluid, and we know that we're doing some steps and strategies to help improve that enrollment moving forward. Elsa, next slide. Thank you. So we did a survey this past spring, this, just a few weeks ago, the past spring semester of our students to get a sense of what are their plans and what are their expectations for fall of '21. We had over 4,000 students respond, and that was a representative sample of our student population. So here's some good news, in that of those 4,000 respondents, 75% of them do indeed plan to enroll for this fall semester. But please know that 35% of that 75%, they're waiting to enroll. Student behavior is to often wait until, I don't want to say last minute, but definitely towards later in the summer, later in July and early August to re-enroll. So right now, we're optimistic that we'll still be able to capture even more of our returning students. We also asked students about their preference, preferences regarding modality. And as you can see from the data, we're learning that 44%, again, of those respondents, 4,000 of which, who must be noted, we're also learning in an online environment primarily. So consequently, that could have skewed that preference to the online environment. But 44% of the students do indeed prefer to take classes in the online format. We broke that down both by traditional online, which is sort of that online anytime. And then 11% of those respondents indicated their preference for the live online, which is you're in an online, but at a scheduled meeting pattern, meeting in a live setting with your instructor. 33% of the respondents were preferring the in-person classes, and then 23% of the respondents preferred the hybrid courses that we offer. So as you can see, we're trying to learn more about what our students' plans are and their expectations, and we're going to then use this data to inform how we adapt and meet their needs. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sasha, who will take us through the next few slides, but share more about our modalities.
Thanks, Eric. So you saw on the last slide that about a third of the students indicated in their survey that they were looking forward to in-person classes. Here's where we are right now, and realize right now is very early. We're still 13 weeks away from the beginning of the semester, and those are COVID weeks, which is like dog years. It's a long ways off. The students aren't really stepping up to the plate yet. But among the students who have actually enrolled, this is what we're looking at. We have right now a little over half of our classes that are available are in an online format. 19% are in-person classes, and the rest are hybrid or something unusual. The interesting thing, though, is that of the 56% of our classes that are online, they're 67% full. Those classes are filling up very quickly. Whereas with the 19% that are in person, those are only 29% full. So there's an interesting question here. Is this seeing that there is a difference between what the students were intending to do and what they're actually doing? Are we seeing them vote with their feet in a different way than they voted with their mouths? Or is this that the online students are just enrolling earlier, and the face-to-face students are waiting later? Or is it that the students have changed their minds? It's hard to tell. We are in a real situation of flux. Things are changing quickly, and we just only have a little bit of information, and we're doing the best with what we've got. Could you please go to the next slide? Thank you. If we look at why students are saying that they are not enrolling, money comes to the front of the picture. 41% of our students listed financial considerations as to why they are, whether they are sure or not about enrolling. Another 23% listed employment considerations. So clearly, the state of the economy for the students is making a big difference and is having an oversized effect on their decisions related to going to college, which is consistent with the nationwide picture. Next slide, please. This is having an impact. This is having an impact on the diversity of the colleges. We find that both, we find that the first generation students, students of color, non-traditional students, they were all even more likely to list financial considerations as affecting their choices as the, the more traditional students and the, the less diverse pools. So we're worried that this might have an impact on the, the diversity of our student body if it continues on. Next slide, please. And ultimately this all boils down to, we just aren't sure what the students are actually wanting. We're, we're in a time of flux. There's a difficulty in predicting what the students are, are going to be interested in, what they're actually going to pursue. And so our only option is to offer up a menu of opportunities and remain flexible and change as the students change. And I'll turn it back over to Eric and you can continue to the next slide, please.
Thank you, Sasha. And again, with that data we just shared with you, please note that a lot of that data was again, from our continuing students. We know we have new students that are coming to us and our colleges are doing their best also to capture what our new students want. And that'll continue to inform our thinking and our decisions that we make about adapting to our student needs. The first part of this focused on enrollment, but I guess I want to, I want to shift our thinking a little bit to make sure we also focus on the success of our students as well. And it's critical, we always in our times when we think about budget and, and we think about who we are as a system. Enrollment tends to be that, that piece we focus on, and I understand the reason for that. But it's also very important that we focus on the success of our students. And so we just thought it'd be important to share with you a little bit of the, the impact of the online transition and what it's had for our students' success. So I know there's a lot of words here, so I'll highlight what I can and I apologize for the small print on your screens. But please know that we are seeing a slight increase in non-completion, meaning withdrawals, students not completing, and we are seeing an increase, a slight increase in DF and grades of unsatisfactory grades, if you will, where again, students are not quite as successful as they were in, in the past when it comes to their performance at Maricopa. Now that's to be understood in some, and to be realized because we know traditionally in the online environment, students tend to not be as successful as face to face. But really we're doing a lot of efforts, whether it's, and Dr. Dale will share a little more with this moving forward, but a lot of efforts to support the online students and how we're adapting to meet their needs. But as we talk about enrollment, I think it's important that we also talk about the success of our students in courses that have transitioned to online. And so we're just making sure that again, the decisions we're making also we realize have an impact on the success of our students. So as I mentioned, Paul Dale, he's going to take us through how we are indeed adapting. This will be the, the crux of our conversation, I think our discussion as well, moving forward, how we're adapting to meet our students' needs for fall 21 and beyond. Paul.
Thank you, and I appreciate moving to the next slide. It is my pleasure to spend a little bit of time in terms of lessons learned and in terms of how we're being more responsive and adaptive. I do want to pick up on just a couple of thoughts about our economic and student success engine. That is how we deliver our course offerings. As Sasha and Eric have indicated, four, four primary modalities, online, asynchronous, live, online, in-person and various form, versions of hybrid in terms of both in-person and online. And I share that with you because part of our efforts moving forward is to make sure that as a system, we brand those approaches. So as students navigate from one college to the next, clearly the types of modalities that we present are clearly communicated. And it's clear in terms of consistency across the entire system. I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about how we've moved to academic and student support services that are offered in person and virtually. And then talk a little bit about leveraging technology. I'll give you a couple of teasers and then we will move to the next slide. So first of all, clearly we're maximizing the use of technology. Every college has offered a chat feature that allows instantaneous connection with students, either via text or in some cases, an opportunity to connect in person. For example, Real Salado College has done live, online via chat in terms of making that connection with students to address issues around financial aid. In a second, I'll talk a little bit more about how the virtual support has, has expanded our office hours and increased access for students. And I'll also touch briefly, and I'll do that right now in terms of how we've elevated the use of our, our course management system, which is Canvas and virtually, since we've gone online, I, I would argue that it's likely that virtually 100% of our courses are now utilizing Canvas as a learning management system, which provides an opportunity for a repository for off-course materials. It allows for both asynchronous and synchronous learning for both online and in-person classes. Gives you the opportunity to create virtual discussion groups. And it also allows students, as an example, access, real-time access to their course grades. So clearly one of the lessons we've learned is that we were under utilizing Canvas as a tool, again, especially to augment and to improve instruction that's occurring in the in-person, face-to-face environment as a way to expand student engagement and access outside of the normal Carnegie unit in terms of the time in which students need. Next slide, please. So I have a couple of examples here. And again, clearly a lot of this work is being done at every single college, but I thought we would highlight just the number of ways in which we've adopted to, again, to increase student access, to increase student engagement, and ultimately to increase student success. So clearly prior to the pandemic, we were doing online tutoring. But with the movement to, in, in, as Eric has indicated, significant number of courses being online. That has grown exponentially in terms of the number of students accessing tutoring online, both again, in a live, online situation and some, through some asynchronous ways as well. A number of colleges have moved to, I would, I would suggest many colleges have moved to, again, given what Dr. Lashinsky shared about the success rates in online courses, early alert systems, and then the implementation of college care teams that could involve members of the advising team, counseling team and individual faculty to reach out to students if they're running into situations of difficulty. So for example, at Phoenix College, employees reached out to make wellness calls to virtually all enrolled students to make sure that they had information about additional support services, both on and off campus. Again, as a commitment several years ago to continue to implement our guided pathways program, our fields of interest, which nine distinct pathways for students to choose a career path. Many colleges have embedded peer support within that, either peer leaders or peer mentors. This allows students who are in like majors, again, to do specific outreach efforts such as phone calls, email, texting to make connections with those students, build that sense of cohesion, that sense of connection with, when it, within each of those cohort areas. So we found that to also be very, very successful in improving in the number of contacts and the, and the creation of a, a virtual community. A number of colleges have, have found great ways to, to what we're calling dual platform. That's an opportunity for courses to be delivered both live, online and in-person at the same time. So that there would be a number of students physically in a classroom and then the additional courses would be participating in real time, online. Related to that, a number of colleges, especially in the areas of science, have moved to a hybrid delivery that allows the, the lecture portion of the didactic portion of that to be presented online. And then the lab portion of that to be presented in person. And in fact, that's been so successful that many colleges are going to continue that hybrid format, which will increase efficiency and use of our space once we move beyond the pandemic. So again, clearly we're looking at ways to leverage the new and different ways to increase student access to learning. It's been exciting to note as well that as we've moved into virtual appointments and, and advising and counseling specifically, again, we no longer stop our work when the doors close at six o'clock at night. Many colleges have seen increase in the number of advising sessions and counseling sessions that occur in the evening after our students are done with their traditional working days. And clearly we're going to continue that opportunity. And as Dr. Gonzalez indicated earlier, as we reimagine our workforce, the opportunity for our workforce to work virtually to meet evening hours and weekend hours when historically our physical buildings were closed, again, is a, is a huge takeaway. So again, a number of things that we've invested in, in terms of again, increasing access, increasing opportunities to connect. And I think again, the largest takeaway is that we realized that there are clearly a number of tools in our toolbox that we were under utilizing prior to the pandemic. Whether that be the chat feature, whether that be live, online courses, whether that be, you know, virtual video conferencing, those kinds of things. And again, the magic of that is going to be the integration of that with the in-person experience to again, to demonstrably improve the amount of quality contact we have with students. But I think that's a quick overview of the kinds of sampling of activities that we are doing to adopt and again, to, to meet the needs. And I'll echo real quickly and then I'll hand it off to, to our next presenter. I think part of our challenge is, is better understanding that large cohort of students who basically opted out of all of higher education, whether that be community colleges or the university. And clearly what Sasha had indicated is, you know, what do we need to do best to meet that unknown need of the students who opted out for a year? And again, with the multiple opportunities of modalities and ways to connect with students, I think we're well positioned to do that. So with that, I'll hand it off, I believe, to Matt Ashcraft.
Thank you, Dr. Dale. My name is Matt Ashcraft. I'm associate vice chancellor for strategy and research and effectiveness. And I'm going to talk to you about how we're going to continue monitoring the needs of our students and the experiences that they have with Maricopa. While historically, we have asked our students to provide us feedback through some very large nationally normed surveys, the frequency at which we conducted those surveys was just far too infrequent. And what in industry is now known as experience management is a process for monitoring interactions that matter across the student lifecycle. And we can look at our, our student information system for our operational data and we can see what happened. What did our students take? What did they drop out of? What were they successful in? But we don't always know why it happened. So gaining this experience data through surveys, through interactions with our students will help us understand why it happened. So for as much ambiguity as, as has been mentioned in this presentation about what our students want and need, we are getting better at getting better, more actionable, timely and relevant feedback from our students to help us inform our decision-making. Some good news is we actually started this work prior to the pandemic. So it wasn't just the pandemic that kind of forced our hand in, in terms of ensuring we heard from our students more frequently. We were strategically moving this direction before the pandemic occurred. I would also like to let you know that there's a, a team of researchers from colleges, our analytics team that resides in my team, from marketing and from our student communications team, who are, are all working on this together. So currently how we're monitoring our students, we have website intercept feedback that's on all the time. If you go to one of our webpages, there's a little bar you can click on over on the right-hand side. So say, tell us why you're here, are you finding what you need? And then we also are conducting surveys of our students. You just heard results from one of those surveys, which is our current students. So this next month, this month, we're preparing to survey students that are in our pipeline who haven't been with us before, but they've applied, indicated interest. So we will be able to provide you with that data on our new students that Dr. Lashinsky mentioned earlier. And we have stood up as a part of guided pathways. We know it's best practice to try to understand our students holistically. So we have a new student intake survey that currently five of our colleges are participating in with the other five planning to come onboard in the next year. And we asked our students about how they're feeling about going to college. We ask our students what they might need assistance with. And what interestingly enough, most indicate they want help with math. That's not surprising. It's kind of a general population experience. We're building a uniform grad exit survey. Right now, the colleges all have a grad exit survey. So as our students graduate, we ask them about their experience with us. But we're making that a more uniform experience and we're asking whether or not students would promote Maricopa to their friends and family. We're doing a lot of event feedback surveys. Our academic and student affairs division, the district puts on a lot of events for students and we do a lot of feedback. How, how did that event go for you? Tell us how we can improve that. We also did some research for a new my info app design that students got to participate in and tell us which design they preferred that we were thinking about implementing. Importantly, what we have planned for future monitoring student needs and experiences, some projects on, on deck are dropout or retention surveys. So if we see that students drop a class, we want to ask them, hey, tell us why you had to drop that class. Is there anything we can do to help you get back in that class or find a different class? We want to automate our enrollment pipeline surveys. So we consistently have data about what's going on for our students in terms of what their desires are, why they might not be enrolling, what their barriers might be. And finally, some more tactical listening with our students around, you know, various subjects that, that we need to hear from our students on. So with that, I'd like to turn it over, back over to Dr. Lashinsky.
Thank you so much, Matt. And that was our last slide. So if I could just put some final touches on our, on our conversation and open it up for any questions from our board members. So first I want to convey on behalf of the whole system, we are excited for the return in the fall. We are prepared to meet our students' needs and we're going to do so in a manner that provides flexibility. So specifically, if a student comes on campus and wants to receive services in person, we got this. We'll be there as a system to meet their needs in person. For those students though, who are not yet ready to come back in person, there will be a number of students that'll be in that space. We will be there to provide our services both in the classroom and outside the classroom virtually. So they are indeed able to get the services they need virtually. And there will be students who will need both, where the time and place will come. They'll need to be on campus and in person. We'll be there to meet them and we'll be there to serve them well. And then for, at the same time, there'll be those students, working professionals, you name it, that are going to need the services virtually. We'll be there to support them as well. We're doing great work across our campuses. I'm so excited for how we're adapting and, and moving forward for fall 21. We know it's fluid, but we know we're ready, we're primed to meet our students' needs. And I think we're, we're set to do so and have a wonderful fall semester. So with that, that concludes our presentation. And President Sullivan, I believe we're open for questions and we can do our best to provide any clarifications to any of the, the items presented today or any other questions that might emerge.
Thank you very much, Dr. Lashinsky, and also to Dr. Dale and Dr. Radesic. So board members, this is our opportunity to ask some questions regarding this aspect of the return in the fall. I will just open it up and hope we can manage ourselves so that everyone gets an opportunity. But does anyone want to start with their questions? If you have any.
This is Mrs. Nguyen, I guess I could start.
Okay, let's do.
Oh, no, Dr. Thor, I heard Dr. Thor, she can go.
Yes, I did too. Mrs. Nguyen, you started and then I'll move to Dr. Thor.
First of all, Dr. Lashinsky, to everyone that just spoke, thank you for your information. The question I keep getting from, oh, sorry. The question I keep getting from my constituents is, when will we be fully opened? My understanding is based on what you just presented, it's a staged opening. So we will not be fully, full classrooms. I think I heard something like eight weeks into the session and then hopefully by January of 2022, we'll, we'll look a lot like we did in 2019. Is that, is that fair?
I think President Sullivan and Ms. Nguyen, I think I would answer that just a little bit differently or convey that a little bit differently. I would say we are fully open and fully functional this fall. Again, if a student comes on campus, their services that will be in person will be there for those students. So I would say we're fully functional, I do think, across our system for the fall. We will have classes in person beginning in August. We will have employees on campus to serve those students and their needs. So I don't, I wouldn't agree with that in that eight weeks will then be more open. I could see having more students coming on campus after eight weeks. It may be their comfort level increases and maybe they're seeking services differently and, and feel that they're, they're ready for that. But we will be fully functional come the fall semester and we'll do our best to, to, to meet the needs of those students who are ready to go in person. So I guess I would have answered just a little bit or explained it just a little bit differently.
Okay, and if, if everyone's, and I don't know what percentage. Okay. And if if everyone's, and I don't know what percentage is online right now, and I don't know what percentage will be in person, and we'll have to evaluate that probably at the end of the fall semester in December. But do, my concern is we have Riosolato. And if we are all online or we we tend to stay that way, do we need 10 Riosolatos? And do we need the expense of 10 Riosolatos? So my push is to engage students back to the campus to meet the needs of the community. That's not, I'm not, I'm not suggesting at all that we are not fully functional. What the in-person learning, I believe, will increase enrollments. That's my own personal view. And I think there's some data to support that. And I obviously, we want our students to have a certain comfort level. And we want our teachers to have a certain comfort level. But I believe that that's, if someone has money issues, I think this was brought up earlier, access. I think you brought up that having money. Sometimes a face-to-face interaction on the campus where we can sit down and talk and deal with the concerns versus an online one will lead to better outcomes in terms of people enrolling. I'd also like to, I'm pushing for that because I think our competition, if you will, the other colleges in this county that are fully open and have students on campus are adversely affecting our enrollment currently. And I would, I'd like to encourage the college president to do everything they can to get people back on their campuses as soon as possible. And so I think I would really like to see some numbers of enrollment. I know we we just graduated, but I'm hopeful that as we bring people back to campus, that we see significant increases in enrollment. And I think that, and I don't know if you've got anything to say beyond that, but I, I'm encouraged that we're opening back up. But I have people pushing like, parents begging me, like, please, can I get my kids back onto your campus? Like, they're worried about their mental health, they're worried about their attitudes, their socialization. Mental health, I think, is the biggest concern that I keep getting heard heard over and over again. So I don't, I don't want to diminish what's being done. This was a big one-time pandemic. But I also want to encourage us to normalize as soon as possible.
And and Mrs. Nguyen, when that community member, you know, comes to you and says, when can I get back on campus? Tell them they they can come back. We're here to support them. We're here to meet those needs. And so a couple of things, I'll just, you mentioned, we don't want 10 Riosolatos. And I think, I hear your spirit of that. And quite honestly, I think we'd agree from a system perspective, we don't want to do that. We we have Riosolato that's an effective virtual, you know, learning experience. Obviously, it provides some in-person too across our valley. But it's it's important that we understand that the other nine colleges are not aspiring to be the next Riosolato. We know that our niche is that in-person, small class sizes, personal connections with students. But we're learning and adapting, and we realize that we can create some of that same experience virtually as well that's going to meet the needs of some of our students who are not able to for life reasons or willing yet to be in person. So I think we agree collectively that we're not aspiring to be a fully online institution of the Maricopa Community Colleges. That's not our bread and butter. That's not how we're designed. But I do know that we're ready to be more flexible. So we can, as Dr. Dale mentioned, offer services off hours to meet the needs of our working, of the working adult or offering more services on the weekends to better align with the needs of our students. So so again, when that community member reaches out to you, Mrs. Nguyen, and said, when can I come back to the community colleges? Let them know, we're here. We are open for business. And we're going to be doing our best to serve their needs. And you're spot on about the mental health. We can all feel it. We can all see it. I have two kids of my own, and I've watched that up and down of what it feels like to be at home and and learning away from friends. There's something very important about that and that return. So I think we we're on the same page of that. We're on the same page with that. So thanks for your comments.
Thank you.
Dr. Thor. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I actually don't have a question, just a comment. First, I want to thank all of the presenters for a very informative presentation. And also to thank all of the people behind what was presented today. You know, undoubtedly, the pandemic has been extremely hard for everyone. And certainly, one has gone on much longer than any of us anticipated that it would. However, it is very gratifying to see that as a system that we're reflecting on the experiences of how we served our students as as well as how we worked with our employees during this time. And that this is going to result in better and more flexible to our students. So I, for one, hope that we will never look exactly like we did in 2019, rather that we will come out of this even better than we were in in 2019. And I was also extremely excited about Matt Ashcroft's presentation on getting feedback from our students in a variety of ways and on a regular basis. Because I've always believed that feedback is the breakfast of champions. And so the more we know what our students are thinking and wanting and feeling, the better that we are going to be. So congratulations on all of the good work and thinking behind this presentation and the initiatives that it represents.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Board members, any other comments for the presenters this evening?
I have a question, Ms. Sullivan.
Yes, Mrs. McGrath.
It sounds like they've been doing an excellent job, and I'm very pleased. I'd like to see everybody on campus that wants to be on campus, and hopefully, that's what is happening now. Has there been any change or improvement in being able to register in one place and pick up classes from other campuses? Have we improved our registration process in this? I don't want to call it downtime, but perhaps in a time when it's different. Have we made any strides forward?
I'll go ahead and do my best to answer that, Mrs. McGrath. And we're making progress. We know there's a long history of challenges with the enrollment process. And and I've heard many people say, if it if it would have been an easy fix, maybe we would have done it, you know, a year or two ago, right? But we are convening some of the best experts across our system. Associate Vice Chancellor Bettina Selles, along with some of our Associate Vice Chancellor Keisha Brock, Merrith Warner, and others of our Vice Presidents of Student Affairs and our IT professionals. A small team, a small, powerful, smart team is coming together. And we're going to do our best to revise this process. At the last, or two CEC meetings ago, at the Chancellors Executive Council, we had really a walkthrough of what the enrollment process would be. And we got some feedback from Anna Chandler, who's one of our employee representatives, who who walked through and recorded a student going through the enrollment process. And as a collective group, we learned a lot from that. And so we are making progress. It will be swifter progress as we continue this summer. And I'm very optimistic that by our enrollment process for the spring of '22, we will have improvements that will be very noticeable about the student experience. And we think we'll remove some of those barriers and hurdles that we've heard identified by our students.
Has there been any inquiry into other schools in other states that have multiple campuses like we do? And see if they have figured out a better way for students to cross enroll at the various campuses? Have we contacted these other schools and said, hey, how does your process work?
Yes, we have done that. And we have, again, the same individuals I've mentioned are in touch with other systems across the nation, community college systems, quite honestly. And what we're learning are some of the barriers that exist are ones we've created, sometimes in the best interest of wanting to be in the best interest of our students. But instead, we ended up creating a few more barriers in the process. So we're trying to balance what our compliance needs are when it comes to enrollment, what we're, of course, required to do versus what we thought might have been the right thing to do, but created unnecessary barriers. So to your question, Mrs. McGrath, yes, we have, we are reaching out and have reached out to systems across the nation, trying to learn more about what they do differently and better. And we'll, we'll learn from them and we'll do our best to implement so we can create a seamless enrollment experience for our students.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to that. And I wanted to, perhaps, we could schedule a report on how you've improved the system within the next couple of months? Because, yeah.
Absolutely. I think we can do so. And again, we know there's many factors that contribute to enrollment of our students and continuation with us. But we know one, a factor is the experience they have when they just try to register. And we want to make sure that's seamless, that's smooth. And that is one that does not provide those barriers that we know sometimes get in the way. So I think it would be more than appropriate, obviously defer to President Sullivan and Chancellor Gonzalez, but more than appropriate to provide an update, you know, in the fall semester, once we have more progress made. But I'm sure we can do so.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Board members, continuing our question and answer or inquiry or statements, does anyone else have anything they'd like to offer this evening?
I've got a quick comment and a couple of questions, if that's okay.
Yes, Dr. Narini, talking to us from Mexico.
Yay. Well, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. And I just want to share some of my experiences with my students and the advisors and the work that has been going on on the campuses. They are remarkable, the advisors. I have students call me and tell me that they got a call back at eight o'clock at night from an advisor to answer their questions because they, you know, they weren't able to get through during the day. So what I'd like to see is maybe we need to increase some of those advisors and some of the things that they do. Because I, I mean, I know those are a lot of, a lot of those entry-level jobs. And the advisors are very professional. When I talk to them on the phone about about students, and they've been very helpful. So, yeah, they're doing a fantastic job. And they're doing a great job of helping them navigate that complicated registration system as well. So a quick question is, how did we decide, how did we decide which classes were going to be online and which classes were going to be in person and which classes were going to be hybrid? Was there still sort of a process for that?
So Board Member Narini and others, I guess the best I'd offer with that, there's an art and science that I'd put forward there. And I mean that in that there's, you know, you can look at data, will help inform the decision. But there's also just that feel. Some of that feel is what the learning, what the objectives are. You know, from a competencies perspective, there are definitely some courses that do not lend themselves to being in that virtual format. And I think our sciences would, you know, any science instructor that that could be listening in on this would would think of their lab experiences as an example. And we know that a virtual lab experience, although it can be accomplished, may not always be the the most optimal learning environment. So I'd say the first factor we looked at, or the colleges looked at, and the vice presidents and the division chairs, et cetera, was looking at what are the learning objectives? And which modality would more lend itself to be suitable for that learning objective? Then we're also looking at our students and what they're, what they're asking and demanding. You can see it in some of our enrollment trends. And so that's going to dictate where we go moving forward. And in some cases, too, we did have instructors who were very optimistic and willing to come back. And I'd offer that those were some of the courses then, too, that were offered in person because they felt comfortable to come back and and we wanted to honor that experience as well. But first and foremost, I would offer Dr. Narini that it's about the the learning competencies. And we want to make sure that we're offering courses in a modality that meets the learning needs of those students. So I hope, though, when a student comes and looks at our fall offerings at whichever college, that they're going to see the flexibility in choice, that they're not going to feel that they're pigeonholed in only one modality, that they'll have the ability to navigate between an online or a virtual or a hybrid experience and in-person experience to the best, to meets their learning needs. So again, I'd love to sit and tell you, we had a formula, but there's not really a formula per se. There's a little bit of an art and a little bit of science to scheduling the classes and then the modalities that are good there.
Dr. Lyschinsky, this is Paul, if I can amplify that just a bit.
Sounds great, Paul.
Yeah, Dr. Narini and board members, I also want to add to, I think that there is a priority, both with our division chairs and college presidents and academic affairs leadership, is that students are provided also the opportunity, getting to Mrs. Nguyen's point, is that if they want an in-person experience, that we work to build a schedule that allows either a part-time or a full-time student to complete the right courses in any of our pathway programs, our Arizona Gen Ed courses, whether that be in in the associates or the business or the science pathways. So I would add, one of the complexities of the schedule is to ensure that if a student opts for a totally in-person or a totally online, is that we go back to our workaround guided pathways to ensure it's not so much about the percentage of courses. It's more importantly, do we have the right courses to allow a full-time student, if they so opt, to have the total online experience? In addition, I'd add that I think one of the challenges we're facing is the integration of the choice. So as students opt for both in-person and online and live online, that we build a schedule that makes it appropriate, that the schedule is reasonable. So keep in mind, we're very much tuned in to guided pathways and the course pathways that we've identified to make sure that regardless of modality, if they offer an entire in-person line, that we aspire to have that schedule as well. So I just wanted to compliment what Dr. Lyschinsky had here.
Well, thank you. Yeah, and I'm glad to hear that because, because I think it'd be a mistake if we thought that, you know, students either want online or in-person. Just with the students I've helped register, you see that, you see that students will think, I want to take this class in person, but this fits better in my schedule because it's online. So I think that'd be an interesting data point to look at at the end of this next semester is to see how many of those students took a mixture of classes? You know, they, how many were completely online, how many were completely in-person, how many took that mixture? Because I think that's what we're going to find. We're going to find more and more students taking a mix of everything. Because it's more than just preference. It's, it's jobs, it's family, it's all these other issues that they have going on in their lives. They may prefer all in-person, but their life is going to dictate that they have to do online or a hybrid course. So it'd be interesting to see that data point when when we get further along. So thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate you highlighting the, it's not an either/or, but a both-and as we approach moving forward. That was very well stated. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Narini. Board members, Ms. Smith, I know Ms. Bitter Smith has had to exit the call. Do you have any comments or questions?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I echo my appreciation of my board members to all the presenters. Thank you very much. I just wanted to pose two questions. The first has to do with the planned and future monitoring noted on Slide 12. I'm curious about the dropout and retention surveys. Are comparisons made across the 10 colleges? Are survey results aggregated? I was wondering if you could just elaborate a bit as to, well, I guess because it's planned or future, we don't have an example of how it's done in the past. But perhaps you could speak to how college by college comparisons might be made? Or if this is more of an aggregated survey and how we plan on learning from those surveys?
President Sullivan, Board Member Smith, I'm happy to elaborate on that. When we think about where do we need to hear from our students, we then think about who are the key stakeholders around that particular point in time. So for dropout and stop-out, obviously faculty are a key stakeholder, obviously. Student affairs folks are key stakeholders. And we sit down and we think through, okay, how are we going to go about serving our students? We work with our IT department, if there's any way that we can automate the serving of those students. And we always ask for complete buy-in from across the colleges for the project so that we can have all the colleges receiving that critical information, but also be able to take a look across colleges as far as what's going on for our students. I'm not sure I answered your entire question, but, yeah, it's not just an aggregate because it's data that only our relevant faculty and staff are going to be able to see. We're able to have that data broken down at the student level. For example, with our new student intake survey, we have a dashboard that advisors at the five colleges who are participating can go in and they can look at a particular student, if a student said they needed someone to reach out to them. They can see how they responded to the survey, what they wanted assistance with, how they're feeling about going to college. So when they sit down with them for their first advising session, they can work with them one-on-one and they have a lot more information about them. So that's always our goal, is to get individual student record data. Again, ensuring we only have access to that data for those who need it.
Thank you. I'd like to offer a comment. And I'll note to Dr. Gonzalez and others that I would welcome further conversation on the following, if it would be interesting and helpful. What comes to mind is, I think that What comes to mind is I think that we are in a position where I would love to be able to answer, how is the Maricopa, how are the Maricopa Community Colleges best in class? At, and then insert a few things here. So it could be, how are the Maricopa Community Colleges best in class with regard to monitoring student needs and experience management? And I think I am part of the way to be able to answer that question, but I think in order to be able to answer that we're best in class, I would need to be able to have a better sense of what some of the other similarly sized community colleges are doing in the way that they handle surveys, both in terms of response rates, volume, method of conducting the surveys. And then we can make a comparison and show, you know, this is the scope of our ambition, this is what's going to set us apart to be, to be best in class. And I mentioned this kind of best-in-class framing for two reasons. One, as more national attention is brought to the enrollment issues that we see with the community colleges, I'm really looking for ways to show how Maricopa stands apart from the rest and really bring more positive attention to the community colleges nationally. And secondly, and I think Mr. Spicker would be interested in this, you know, any time that we can show ourselves as best-in-class, definitive and distinctive, that will help position us for grants and other fundraising opportunities as well. And so I just want to say thank you for planning to do some of this survey work and just know that from my perspective, we could be really ambitious here and I think it would behoove us to be able to, again, answer this question of how are our student success and student experience ambitions best in class in a national landscape? So I, as I said, I welcome future conversation on that topic and I thank you all for what you're up to.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Are there any other comments or questions from board members? Anything else, anyone else would like to offer? Board members first, anything else? Dr. Lyschinsky, certainly there's been a tremendous amount of information provided to us this evening, all very interesting and certainly sets the stage for us for further inquiry. I would like to join my colleagues in saying thank you and expressing our appreciation to you and your team for putting this information together for our review and also how we are, will dissect it and analyze it for next steps and further inquiry. It's from that angle, I think we can get to the place where Ms. Smith is interested in having more information and that is around this best-in-class thinking for everything that we choose to do, particularly wrapped around student success. I appreciate all of the questions from everyone this evening and all the points of view. And I think as you listen to the board, we're very aligned with our larger district interests to keep us moving in elements of innovation, but also in ensuring that we are capturing the information to help us do better and to help us prevail in not just Maricopa for all the students that are here, but for setting a standard of what's important for students as they embrace their learning and move into the workforce and/or are in the workforce wanting to do better in their own jobs. So with that, I appreciate all the work and effort. And even though we aligned this discussion today for returning to fall, I think it's greater than that. I think the discussion is really what's more, what is more to come and how can we be keeping our students top of mind and the elements of technology and faculty teaching and learning and staff support that are integrated into all of that. So Dr. Gonzalez, thank you for bringing your team to us this evening to do this presentation and you get the closing comments.
Thank you, President Sullivan and members of the board. And again, thank you to the team and all of those, as Dr. Thor indicated, there are many, many people behind the folks that are presenting and are able to share this data with you. So I want to publicly thank all of our employees across the system and thank our communities for their support and for our students for continuing to choose us and to thank the board for your leadership during this pandemic. I think the key takeaway is here is that we have demonstrated that we are a learning institution and we have learned from this pandemic, we're evolving, we will continue to evolve and that we are, we are back open and we're ready to serve students and to meet students where they are. And whether that's face-to-face, virtual, or a combination of the two, we're going to be a better hope before it and we're looking forward to continuing to report back in the future how this work continues. Thank you, President Sullivan.
You're welcome. And again, to everyone, I hope you have a good evening. We are set for another meeting next Tuesday evening, June 15. We will have a brief conversation on the board's policy committee and some input and insight there, as well as our agenda review. The meeting will start at 4:30 on the 15th. Then the following week, June 22nd, we'll have the public hearing and voting on not just the budgets that we presented to us this evening, but also more on the policy that's aligned with the return, both for our workforce and our students. So with that, I wish everyone a nice evening. It's beautiful out there, sunshine and it's cooler than usual. So if you can get out and enjoy the weather, please do. With that, everyone, good evening and we'll talk together next Tuesday. Good night.